Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no beginning of the meeting, public commenting, so we'll go right to the omnibus agenda, items that will be taken with a single vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion.
Move approval?
Second.
Items considered under omnibus tonight are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, December 16th, 2024, a report to receive and file town of normal expenditures for payment as of January 1st, 2025, a resolution authorizing a lease extension with the U.S. House of Representatives, representatives by its agent, Representative Darren LaHood, and a resolution to approve executive session minutes to dispose of verbatim recordings of past executive sessions and to retain confidentiality for the executive session minutes of January 16th, 2024, February 19th, 2024, August 5th, 2024, and December 16th, 2024. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. Those items are approved. We have no general orders tonight. We do have new business, a motion to accept the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 to fiscal year 2029-2030, community investment plan.
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Finance Director, Mr. Hune, is coming forward. He's going to review from a pretty high level, I think, the proposed community investment plan. The reason we share this is it reflects our capital plan for the next five years. It shows current year and then the next five years. These are the capital investments and we brought in to say the community investment plan. These are the capital spend that you will be seeing in the proposed fiscal year 25-26 budget. And we will be reviewing that budget at your next council meeting, which is Tuesday, January 21. It's on Tuesday because of the Martin Luther King holiday. So, Mr. Hune is going to spend some time going over some highlights of the proposed community investment plan. We have copies of his PowerPoint presentation at your seat. And he'll be prepared to answer any questions you might have, as are the leadership team members here, the variety of staff members, all of which have a little bit of responsibility with these projects. So, Mr. Hune?
Thank you.
Thank you. As Ms. Reese mentioned, this is our CIP. This is our first formal discussion, only about the budget process. We always bring the CIP to you first, and then, as Ms. Reese mentioned, we're going to talk the work session, operating funds on the 21st. As a reminder, this is a six-year window we're looking at, the current year plus the five-year budget that's being proposed to you shortly. The purpose of the CIP is pretty vast. Its primary purpose is simply to keep the community vital and at high quality. We feel that if we are managing our capital assets, our community assets in an effective way, we're spending funds to keep those things in good place, in good service, then it increases the quality of life of our residents. So, we take this money very seriously as all funds, and this capital project process is very near and dear to our hearts. In terms of a review, to give you a sense of the diversity of the capital projects that the town's involved, and I know you're aware of this, but it's good to kind of recap. Transportation, roads, bridges, and traffics and those significant spending in those areas. Public works, of course, for vehicles and equipment, the waste collection, the street maintenance, public safety, our police and fire, a new fire station, our parks and facility maintenance, aquatics, our HVAC systems, our roofs, our floors, our building envelopes, and of course, our water and sewer infrastructures. So, you can see a significant amount of spending, a significant amount of project categories span a great deal of area for what we do for the town in terms of community investment and capital projects. We need to balance it all somehow and prioritize. And then, we'd like to make sure we show this in a transparent way with a nice informative tool, which I'll show you at the end of the presentation. In terms of kind of balancing and prioritizing this, where do we spend our dollars? And where does the dollar make the most sense? We draw from a lot of different areas to make that decision. On this slide before we, right now, you can see a lot of health and safety, of course. What's funding, what funding is available for certain projects? What capacity do we have to complete them? We do a lot of master planning studies, of course, and valuation studies to see where we're spending dollars, where it needed to be spent for part master planning, for roadwork and so forth. Also, we look at what the quality of service is. If we increase spending in this area, will that enhance the quality of service? Will it make it more efficient? Are we painting to our current infrastructure appropriately? Are we making sure the equipment's usable and lifecycle's being managed well? So, you can see a lot of things go into capital projects. It's not always a science. There is some art to it in where we spend dollars. The last piece is, of course, project complexity. We try to make sure the timing of certain projects align well with other areas, water and sewer versus roadwork, and when it can kind of allow those align well. And then, of course, federal state mandates drive a lot of our capital projects, too. So, you can see from this list and our own discussion with council, we prioritize best we can where the dollars make the most sense to be spent. For the CIP, we divide, we defy stuff and a lot of stuff in terms of the budget process into accounts and divisions and departments and organizations. For the CIP, we divide into these six categories. Transportation, others kind of are operating assets. We're purchasing our vehicles and equipment, water and sewer, of course, parks and facilities and stormwater. So, all the projects align somewhere in one of those spending categories. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this slide because it's very meaningful in terms of what's happening. The last couple of years of our CIP, we've been fortunate in the fact that we've had some fiscal flexibility, per se, to add a lot more to the CIP. And so, the last couple of years of CIP were fairly straightforward in terms of being able to dedicate more funds to things. You look at this slide here, last year, we had $208 million of spending over the six-year period, again, that current year now, and five years for the budget, so our six-year window. $208 million, 457 projects. This year, a bit under $200 million and a little lower in projects. I don't necessarily want the council to react overall to that because we look at the six-year window. Capital projects can be up and down. You know, we move that six-year window up one year every single year. Year one falls off, year six comes on. So, the nature of capital project spending can be up and down quite a bit. If it's down, it could be simply a timing thing in terms of a bunch of projects fell off that were significant and huge and got completed, which we'd like to see happen. And year six didn't quite come out the same robust amount, but it kind of all evens out in the end. Now, it can also drop down because we're pulling back. And in this case, kind of two things are happening. We are pulling back a little bit of spending, and we are having some timing issues in terms of what drops off. So, hopefully, I'll kind of walk you through that a little bit. Into the transportation, very small change there. That actually stayed pretty stable. That's our biggest spending category. A lot goes into this column of spending, you know, trail extension and pavement preservation, roadwork, you know, all kinds of things, sidewalk, ADA, concrete patching. All those things move up and down throughout that six-year period. But for the most part, we're pleased to see that our commitment to spending for the last six years has remained pretty close to this current six years. Other category, there's a drop there. That was actually a bit of a pullback in budgeting, and we're going to discuss this a lot more on the 21st. But part of the balancing the budget this year for us, as the councils are aware, we've had a bit of a struggle, like all municipalities across the nation, of revenue. We've had, you know, inflation, high inflation. We've seen revenue drop back significantly. So, we solved a lot of that problem in terms of revenue shortfall from planned revenue through kind of a pullback of capital. And that's usually the first step in trying to manage budget issues, is look at capital, operations, so forth. So, in this other category, we did have in there some money set aside for economic development that we had to pull back on, so that's a small decrease in terms of that capital spend. I'm going to point over to parks and rec. You see parks program, 2.6 million down from last year's, 3.8. Again, a little pullback there in terms of capital spending. We did pull back in facilities, too, but you can see that actually increased by 3.95 million. We pulled back in facilities a bit in the six-year plan, about a million two or so. The increase there was offset by the fire station increase in budget, as well as we did some modifications where we categorized some of the expenses. So, overall, you'll see an increase in facilities, mostly because of fire station. We also added some park deck, parking deck maintenance, but most of that is the fire station increase. We did pull back there. So, the decrease from 208 million to 199, some was actually a pullback in terms of the budget process. And we'll go over that more on the 21st. Now, we did have an increase in, a decrease in timing, and if you look at water distribution, 23.04 million to 30 million, that we did decrease, 7.26 million. That, again, I don't, not real concerned about there. That's timing. We had a lot of significant, huge water projects in year one fall off that got done. So, Mr. Burkhardt and his team in water were doing a lot of work last year that fell off. We're still spending a significant amount of money in that fund, about $4 million a year. So, that's not so much a pullback in terms of budget, it's just a timing issue in that six-year window. Kind of moving on now, these charts that you'll see coming up now are just breaking down the actual spend, the six-year plan for the current CIP by category, by significant category. You can see with transportation spending, our street resurfacing is the biggest lion's share there, as well as specific street work. So, we're still spending significant dollars, 50 million plus, in terms of street resurfacing for the six-year plan and specific street work. You see that second category, Uptown Connector, that's the Underpass project. To be quite candid, that $26 million number, I'm really going to say just ignore at this point in time. That's the adopted budget plus changes for the proposed, for the old estimate. As the councils are well aware, we have new bids on that project, and we're evaluating those now. So, we'll come back to you with a new number there, but that's basically last year's number. There remains unchanged based on the new information we have for the bids. And we're in the process of looking at those bids and looking at the budget and process. Bridge and Culvert, a lot going on there. Most of that's the Vernon Avenue Culvert for 4.5 million. So, you can see, again, transportation spend, very similar to last year. We're pleased to see that happening. And this is not a CIP to be ashamed of. It's, we're quite proud of it. 200-plus million dollars or $200 million is a lot to spend, not much off from last year. And we're still funding things like parks and facilities that we weren't doing a number of years ago. Not as much as we were last year, for sure, but we are still funding things at a level we feel comfortable with. Operating assets, this is just to give you a feel for the spend. Vehicles, $20 million, almost $21 million of vehicle spending for the next six years. Things are expensive, no doubt about it. And you look to the right of that chart, you can see what we're going to buy, the view we're going to buy for '25-26. Amelies, $390,000, you know, bulk waste trucks, for two of them, half, over half a million dollars. Garbage truck for one garbage truck, $420,000, seven police cars, $400,000. So, these are assets that we need to maintain operations, assets we need to maintain public safety and public service, garbage collection, police and fire, parks and rec. They're expensive, and we fund this on a pay-as-you-go through our capital plan, which saves us on interest and financing, but it does cost us some cash to get these things done. And we manage that very well. But the point is, it's a significant expense to maintain the capital and the community assets. Water distribution, again, there was, there was a drop in the overall spend. Again, that was mostly timing and not necessarily a budget issue, where year one had a bunch of watering projects that dropped off. And more will come online in our six-year process as we move forward. I do want to say here, though, both for water and for sewer. You see, we're spending about almost $11.3 million in watering replacement. A lot of stuff going on there, water relocation, well maintenance, new well digging. A lot going on with water, a lot going on with sewer. We do have a significant capital need there all the time, and it will never end in terms of those things. Roadwork never ends, water sewer never ends. We are doing well in those areas. We'd like to do better. We do have in the budget a 2% rate increase program for all years. That may not be enough to support the capital need. We'll discuss that more on the 21st. It's just kind of a heads up that as we see the finances, and I'll show you the five-year forecast on the 21st of both water and sewer, we are seeing some challenges there for just that 2% rate increase. And to maintain this capital pressure we have now, we might need more there. But again, we will talk more about that as we get closer to that budget cycle for the 21st.
The other thing, I'll just jump in real quick and interrupt you, though, on this particular topic for both water and sewer. Just a reminder, council knows this, but a reminder to the audience. The investment that we make in the water and sewer systems and our distribution network is 100% funded by the rates, water rates. So, any revenue we receive is built right back into and turned into support the system.
Sewer, again, also a significant spend every year, eight, over $8 million for sewer lining projects, utility improvements. They also have a vehicle and equipment fund that they fund through their rate, through our pay payers. About $3.5 million a year we're spending for sewer. And again, same message there. It's not quite as challenged as the water fund, but it does, we are seeing some decrease in reserves there that we want to bring the council to be, make you aware of. Parks and facilities, again, this is the major player here, of course, in terms of a single project is the fire station, 7.6 million. Other facility projects there, the 5.4 million, there's some parking deck maintenance there. There's the PD locker room, a lot of different projects involved in that. For facility maintenance program, the 2.8 million there, that's building envelope, roofs, HVAC, carpets, everything, windows, everything you can think of in terms of keeps a building maintenance maintained well. And then, park improvements, that's shelters, that's skate park, there's parking lot improvements in France. And so, a lot going on from parks and rec to public works to transportation and so forth in this project. Also, in facilities other, we have the College Street deck build out for more parking on the first floor. So, a lot going on in this budget, a lot we're very proud of in terms of this. We did have to cut back on parks and facilities, but not as much as we hoped to do. And we're still doing a lot there that we're proud of, for sure. Stormwater drainage, this is a stormwater fund. This fund is in good condition. It spends all of its money on detention improvements, drainage, and creek maintenance and so forth. Spending about, let me see, about 5.3 million in total over the six-year period. That's kind of everything we have in terms of a high-level presentation for the slides. As the council is aware, we also keep, we're a very, a CIP interactive dashboard that's available that also displays all the information I just shared with you. So, right now, what we have in the budget, what you're seeing here tonight has been programmed into the proposed budget. We'll show you on the 21st. It's also been programmed into our interactive dashboard for citizens and for anyone to review. Let me, this is just, of course, a picture of the slide. I'm going to go ahead and go out to the actual internet and show you the dashboard a little more. I know the council has seen this in the past, but it's still a good refresher because it's something we're quite proud of in terms of displaying the information, a very transparent, kind of open data feel. If you go to the town website, I'll kind of walk you through it. You can get to it a couple of different ways. You can get through Open Data Portal or through finance. We'll go through Open Data. Could like to make sure that folks know that's out there. So, from the town website here, go to Open Data Portal, click on that. And then, go down here to Budget and Finance here. And it brings you to a page that kind of displays other items of data interest, but you can look at the actual view, CIP dashboard. Click on that, and it will pull up a pretty robust dashboard. I'll kind of walk you through some of this information to share, and we'll do, pick up a few projects, too. First thing you see is this, the map in front of you is kind of a bird's eye view of the town and different colors of boxes. Those are, those shapes represent the different projects and locations. Green is for, I believe, parks and rec, blue is for water and so forth. So, if you look on the left side here, you can see that all the projects listed in terms of project type, facility, parks and rec, storage or transportation and so forth. If you scroll down a little bit, you can see it by fiscal year. And if you scroll further down, you can see it by funding source. The funding source probably isn't, is that concerning to the casual citizen? It's certainly something we look at very closely in finance and the team, but it does give you a sense of what funds certain things. You can see from just the slide here, just the dashboard here, it's 426 total projects over the six-year period, $199.3 million of total spend. This little town down here tells you the funding source, it lists all the funding source and kind of where they're coming from. You can click on this to get a better picture of it. And you can see the lion's share is coming from roadway fund. Underpass, there, of course, is a significant expense for the town that, again, we're still looking at in terms of new bids, water fund, general vehicle reserve, capital. So, it gives you a sense of kind of what funds are supporting what expenditures and how significant they are. You can go to fiscal year and see a breakdown there, too. And typically, what you'll see is you'll see a lot more in the current year, in year one, two, and three. The years are a little lower because as capital projects kind of move through that six-year window, we get better ideas of budgeting, we get better ideas of timing, we get better ideas of when priorities, so they kind of beef up typically a little bit. And then, project type, of course, here at this last tab, it just breaks down by the different project types that I already discussed with you and the number of projects in each. So, to give a little more interactive to this, of course, you can also, on this side, the right side of the screen, it kind of lists out all the projects. You can get to things very, in a lot of different ways. Let's say that you just want to see facility projects, we'll click on that. So, facility projects, the next six years, there's 38 projects in total, $16.3 million of spend just for facility stuff. Facilities is brown. And you can, you can click either, if you want to look at a fiscal year, you can also narrow it down further. I want to see facility projects for just next fiscal year. And then, it'll update the report to show $5.6 million for next fiscal year only. You can see the map interactive showing if things bounced off. You want to click and see what it is? Let's see what this, this is probably the fire station. So, you click on that icon or that part of the screen, and it pulls you into a little more detail. It gives you a description, the total amount, the fiscal year, the type of project, a little bit of a narrative, some quality of life issues in terms of what it's about, and importantly, a contact person, which is Chief Hume on this particular one. If you want to look at park projects, you can just click on parks. Again, same situation, those are green. There's 27 projects in total, $3.8 million of value, just for the whole, for the whole six years. And I hope it's not getting too small on your screen. I apologize. Click over here. Well, we, that's Fairview Park, actually, area. Click on that, and it's the Fairview Skate Park renovation for $300,000 for that fiscal year in 2030, actually, is a remake. We're probably having one also in the current year. So, click off of that. A lot of, we're doing a lot of playground enhancements this year. I think this up here is Rosa Parks. Click on that, that playground for $200,000 there for the next fiscal year. So, you can see that, you can look at where you live, you can look at the area you add, you can do some timing things in terms of what's going to happen next year and the following year. And then, this kind of gives you a sense of everything, again, in terms of projects for all. If you just want to see what's happening for next fiscal year for all projects, then you just click on that year, and then you see $54.5 million being spent next year, just alone on all those projects. So, hopefully, we see great value in this, in this product. We see great value in the process. The directors are deeply involved in programming the funds. The city manager's office helps us decide where to put certain dollars. And what you see here today has been programmed into the proposed budget for, that we'll show you on the 21st. That kind of concludes our presentation. Happy to address any questions you might have. I'll turn it back over to Ms. Reese for any comments.
Mr. Hune, with this, with this particular screen, I think it's important to note and just remind council that in the funding source, you know, the key, the primary funder for some of these, like capital, there we go, thank you, primary funder of the capital fund, the fire station, the general vehicle and equipment reserve, and the roadway fund is the general fund, where the general fund receives the revenue, and then we transfer money from the general fund into these various funds. So, the general fund is the primary funding for those major separate funds. And you can see that the general fund then is doing a lot to support these capital investments, particularly roadway fund, vehicle and equipment reserve. And as Mr. Hune pointed out, some of our fleet, our specialty fleet is pretty expensive. It's going to continue to stay that way, and we're pleased that we're able to afford that and pay cash. But that, just wanted to point out the funding source being the general fund and our general revenue. And so, with that, we're happy to answer any questions about specific projects or the CIP in general, or even the dashboard.
Yeah, I'll start with some questions. This dashboard is just an amazing piece of work, and it really allows people to dig in. Do we have an idea how many hits or how many people look at that in the course of a year? I know IT's not here at the table, but just a curiosity.
Here she comes.
Basu is here.
She, I, I'll ask Ms. Gata Raju to come forward and see if she has information to share about the access, public access to this, the open data portal.
Is it robust? Is it?
It is, as I presented at my Smart City presentation, we do have numbers. I don't have off the top, but I can send it to council.
Just for curiosity.
So, as Ms. Gata Raju indicated, we talked about it briefly during the recent Smart City update, but we don't have specific numbers, but we will provide that and share that information. It is popular by residents, and frankly, we've shown this particular tool to other municipalities as well. And then, I know that our own internal staff uses it, so we will provide the information to council.
I'm going to start and move around on Ms. Smith, and then, Mr. McCarthy.
I was so glad that you spent the time to show this dashboard because I can get lost down a rabbit hole if I start clicking on things. But I'm just so impressed with how much information is so readily accessible to anybody who visits this site. Following some of the points that you raised, on the page five, where you're looking at the water department and indicated that there was some robust spending there, is, can you give us, get us up to date as to whether or not the lead pipe remediation is complete at this point? Or is that bleeding into future periods?
I believe we probably default to the water dredge on that one.
Right. I think we're making significant progress on the lead pipe and galvanized service replacement. And Mr. Burkhardt is readily available to answer that question.
Yeah, we're making progress with it. There's still lead and galvanized lines left to be replaced, kind of fighting some weather issues right now. Our goal would be to be done by end of calendar year '25 with both of those.
Well, and, and just to refresh the record, you had estimated that our total cost was about $1 million, and we had a pretty small, finite number of residences and locations impacted by this. And so, the decision was made for the council to bear this burden instead of getting into debate between property owners and the council. So, that's great news to hear that we might be putting this all behind us in '25. On the same issue of water and a related thing, Congressman Sorenson had held a press conference talking about getting approval for stormwater improvements, I think in the uptown area. And in the same press conference was highlighting the Vernon Road project. And so, you're off the hook on that one. Can you indicate how those projects are reflected in this budget?
Sure, and I'll ask Mr. Otter to come forward. He's our expert on that. You are correct in terms of Congressman Sorenson did include in his congressional-directed spending request funds for both uptown stormwater issue and Vernon Avenue complete streets design. Mr. Otter?
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Both projects are included in the CIP for design. So, the design of Vernon Avenue is shown in the fiscal year '26, as well as the design of the uptown drainage improvement.
Okay, so, but we're not going further than planning for the actual construction? At this point, we're only budgeting for the design elements for both projects?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Mr. Hune was mentioning the two bulk waste trucks that are over half a million. But as I recall, most frequently, it only takes one person to operate those vehicles. So, was any analysis ever done about our efficiency and productivity that we gain by having these expensive pieces of equipment that allow one operator to do the work that I recall, and I'm dating myself, one person would be driving and two people would be hopping off of the back?
Right. Well, I'm going to jump in, and they can supplement if you like, but I've got a pretty long history with the town. Soon, we'll be celebrating my 34 years, and I can say for my entire tenure with the town, we've had one person operated vehicles, one driver and one vehicle in public works for waste collection. I can't say that in the last 30 years, we've done an analysis because that's just how we've functioned. You can't get much more efficient than one person and one truck.
So, for the record, I started knowing about this when I was one year old, so that puts me around 35. I believe that is all the questions I had. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy? Mr. McCarthy?
One question I had, I think you already addressed, on the underpass fund amounts that are going into this plan. I appreciate the update. I did get a few questions from residents about it, what we were going planning forward and so it was good to hear that response. On your screen, for those who are, as, as those who follow along our budget process, we talk in terms of five years and we look forward, but we vote on one year at a time. And so for those who are interested on this screen, if you go to the Select the Fiscal Year section, you can select the current one that we'll be voting on and you can see what's specifically going to be in our actual budget vote and our budget that we will be looking at to approve. And, and then do all of the cool things that Mr. Hune showed you, the ability to go down to a neighborhood and a project. But for those who are following along what we're actually going to be voting on, this is the simplest way to get at it. Feel free, I, in advance of this, tiptoed through the Open Data Porthole here and the CIP and again, kudos to our Technology Department and Finance Department, for everybody, the other departments that puts a lot of work into making this such a cool, interactive, transparent tool to be able to get down to the project level and the people level. A lot of communities, I shared with this at NLC with several communities and have looked at it as well, so really appreciate all the hard work that went into this. Thanks.
Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. My question may actually be more for the 21st, but maybe not. So I know we were looking at the funding sources and two of them kind of stand out for me a little bit. While they're not major, they could possibly have an impact. So it would be the ARPA and CDBG with, I know some adjustments possibly coming. What would that, how would that adjust this CIP that we're looking at today if, one, we get the roll, the possible rollbacks on ARPA? Because I don't think these, would these be classified as already spent dollars or not? And then if they reduce the CDBG, what impact would that have on the projects related to that?
Sure, so ARPA, all the, we've got a fair amount of money spent already, the rest of it has been fully committed, both internally and with the federal government, so I don't perceive any problem there at all. CDBG is a little different animal there if that gets rolled back. We'd have to cut back in the parameters we spend there. I don't, I can't say for sure what those cuts would be, but we would address that if it were to occur.
I totally agree. And the, the CDBG fund, those, usually those dollars are in addition to some other project dollars and maybe capital or roadway because a particular project might extend into a census tract that qualifies.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there questions? Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. I've got, I think, three areas, roads, water and I'll just go with those two, roads and water. So on the roads, it looks like for fiscal year '26, if I account for roadway and motor fuel, it looks like 10.9 million, is that right?
Sure, let's see. You're just breaking down the, the funding source by fiscal year '26?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm saying, I'll see.
There might be some additional that might come out of general fund, some minor resurfacing or whatnot.
So roadway at 8.9 and then motor fuel at 10, correct. So 10.9 for fiscal year '26.
Okay. As I look at those 14 projects, couple of questions, what's planned there at College and Landmark? That's kind of been an area of interest and concern because of the congestion of some of the, yeah, come on up there, Mr. Otto.
That's a good question.
Yeah, some of the congestion of the businesses there.
That's a really good question and Mr. Otto will kind of talk about the intersection improvement. We do want to acknowledge the, the whole Landmark Drive has been an area of tension and somewhat of an inconvenience for folks this calendar year, this fiscal year because of this north end of Landmark Drive was the Landmark Fort Jesse Improvement, which is, we are now celebrating.
Yeah.
The improvement of that intersection. And so in fiscal year '25, '26, we'll be looking at the south end of Landmark Drive. Do you want to explain a little bit the plan there?
Thank you, Ms. Reese, yes. The project at College and Landmark includes both Mall Drive, so we'll have some pavement rehabilitation. There's a section where we left off just east of Towanda, so we'll be rehabilitating the existing pavement, but also making some efficiency improvements at the intersection itself. The first thing you'll see is new traffic signals. The traffic signal that's there is antiquated currently. There's some radii that we've had some problems with. It's substandard in terms of trucks being able to turn. We've actually had some traffic signals hit over the years there. So we'll be widening some of the radii there. The other thing we'll do is we have a capacity concern for westbound traffic coming off of Veterans Parkway, so it'll be the northbound left turn coming off of Veterans. So the receiving lanes for College, a lot of those turners go right into Landmark, take a left into that shopping area. So we'll be adding a second left turn lane coming off of Veterans Parkway to increase capacity, preclude some of the backups we see that come out to Veterans at certain peak times. And then we'll also be making some improvements for Mall Drive, removing some of the median to get more capacity in the intersection itself.
Okay, great. The, also in that list there, ISU Town of Normal's Transportation Study coming up?
Yes, that is a grant we received about a year ago called the State Planning and Research Grant. So that's in conjunction and we'll be working very closely with ISU. We'll be looking at pretty much all the intersections campus-wide to identify areas of concern for not only pedestrians and bicycles, but also cars. You know, where are the hotspots in terms of safety in the campus area? And with that, we'll be looking at some of the trail intersections going north from Uptown as well.
Okay. So just kind of wrapping up in roads, how do you feel like we're making progress with respect to the Pacer study? Is that still a point of reference? I know it's a couple of years old now, but is that still a good point of reference for us?
It absolutely is an excellent tool for us. You look at it in terms of the streets where they were three years ago. This coming fiscal year, we actually plan to do another rating of our streets and so that will give us some very real data in terms of where we're at with our average scores, payment scores and things like that. But, but also it's a tool we use all the time. In the coming months, we'll be bringing our annual street resurfacing list to the council for consideration and, and that's one of the tools we utilize to, to prepare that list.
And will you show us an updated rating, did you say? Or can?
That will, the, the rating project will be in this next fiscal year. So we will drive the streets again with our specialized contractor to develop a Pacer PCI score for the entire town.
Okay.
Can I jump in to something before, before your next question? I did want to point out, I appreciate your questions. It gives Mr. Otto an opportunity to explain in great detail these particular two projects for sure, the ISU study and the College Landmark Intersection. I wanted to point out if Mr., if Mr. Hune could do it, if you click on the right where it says College and Landmark Intersection Improvements, you know, that a resident or an interested person who wants to look up details of this project could then click on the project and it wouldn't go into quite as much detail as Mr. Otto shared, but it does talk about what the project includes in terms of curb and gutter and turning radii and all that fun stuff to explain the project. So we, I appreciate the more detailed explanation, but the little bit higher level information is you have to click right on the project.
Last thing on roads, and I think I know the answer, we're not doing any alley pavement, right?
No.
Okay. If I can pivot to water? Okay, thank you. How are we doing on PFAS? I see that there's an ammonia study.
Shift of staff.
Yeah.
So we just conducted our second collection sample of the UCMR V water testing that's been required by the US EPA. We did a first testing, I think in June, our second testing was here in December. Both of those tests come back showing that we have no detectable levels of PFAS in our finished drinking water.
And the ammonia study, is that related to the PFAS or no?
No, not really, no.
Okay. All right. What is it that you are measuring other than the bad stuff, the PFAS? I mean, what is the, what is the metric that you're looking at?
For?
PFAS.
Oh, there's, I don't, there's like 15 or 20 different compounds.
Okay.
And I can't pronounce a single one of them.
That's okay. Yeah, they're all acronyms, right? Okay. All right, yeah, that's, that's something I think we need to keep our eye on, I know you are, and I just wanted to give it some conversation now, so thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Further questions or staff on this? Go ahead, Ms.
Just one quick comment and I do want to officially thank the leadership team who puts a lot of time and effort into their multi-year plan for capital, certainly the Finance Department who manages all this and then tries to fit it in with the budget and what we can, can afford to do. And then I do want to call up Ms. Gataroju and the Innovation and Technology Team who really makes this tool workable for our, our internal group who's works on this, but especially the public who can, we hopefully use this to see some details of projects and where our money's going. And like always, if there are questions, staff is always happy to respond to residents or council at any time.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The motion to approve is, has passed. We have before, we do have one public commenter, Kat Hayes, and if you would come forward, just for the record, state your name for, for the record and you have three minutes.
My name is Kat Hayes. I am the Community Health Specialist for Recovery Supports with the McLean County Recovery Oriented Systems of Care Community Coalition. For those who are unfamiliar with what that long mouthful means, we serve as a coordinated network of recovery support services for people in recovery from both substance use and mental health challenges in McLean County. Currently what we're up to, we are conducting our community survey, which is going to help us measure public opinion on issues related to substance use and mental health recovery. We're running our survey through the end of January, beginning of February. My big ask is, I've got wonderful packets for our council members. I know all of you are in spaces where you can share and also please take our survey. This will help inform our updated community needs assessment along with our updated community or strategic plan later this fiscal year. So again, we ask that you go ahead and take the survey, but also share, oh, I remember the one thing I was going to say, there is also a wonderful incentive for, if you take the survey, you have the option to win a $25 gift card. We also have the survey in English and Spanish. I have in the packets 15 flyers for the English version, 10 for the Spanish. Share them wherever you're able to. If you scan the QR code on this, it will take you to our landing page where you can also share that on social media. We've already worked with Town of Normal Communications and they've been wonderful about sharing stuff for us on the Facebook page, so.
Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there council concerns? Go right ahead.
Two things. First of all, up here at, at our stations, many of us received this brochure for the Bloomington and Parks, Parks and Rec programs. They cooperate to provide special opportunities for Alternative Recreation or SOAR and their upcoming program is now in booklet form or online and registration is Thursday, January 9th. And a lot of these fill up very quickly, so I just wanted to make sure people were aware of that and didn't lose out. And then in today's Veterans Corner, there was notice of this work camps program that seeks to provide repairs and needed modifications that a homeowner may be not able to afford themselves, whether they're elderly or they're veterans on limited income. And if you want to know more about it, the St. John's Lutheran Church in Bloomington is coordinating this, but I wanted to highlight this because the deadline for getting your project in for consideration is the end of January. So again, that's a work camp group that is intending to help homeowners and St. John's Lutheran is a contact point that's coordinating it. Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
I'd like to draw some awareness to an upcoming event that I know a couple of us have participated in each year and that is Night in a Car. It is happening again this year, I think it's its ninth or 10th year, to raise funds and awareness for homeless and unhoused. It is February 7th and it begins around 6:00 or 7:00 PM at night. There is a website, nightinacar.org for more information. Sign up or support a team that's already signed up, which would be me.
Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. We are adjourned.